Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present. Approve of the agenda, we have one change, 7B is to be removed. Oh, and then there is another one, 7H, approve resolution 2019-44 approving specs and authorizing bids for grass rig. That is in addition to the agenda. Is there any other changes? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two changes?
Motion to approve with changes.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approve of the minutes of the June 19th, 2019 regular meeting. All receive them in your packet, is there any changes, corrections, clarification needed? Hearing no one, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 19th, 2019 regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Call a third time, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Our public open forum is now closed, we have no public hearings. Brings us to our reports and presentations, Police Department Monthly Report, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, activity report for June 2019, some of the numbers we had for June, we had 10 alarm calls, we did 22 assists for people, we had 72 assists for businesses, we had 25 assists for other agencies, we did bar patrol 11 times, we had 42 citizen contacts, we wrote citations to 12 people for driving with revoked or suspended cancel license, we had seven gas no pays, we had 29 matter of information calls, we had 15 medicals, we had eight citations written for drivers with no Minnesota driver's license at all, we had six open doors that we found, seven vehicle accidents, we wrote 38 speeding tickets, we had 34 suspicious calls, we had 14 theft calls, we had four threats complaint, we had nine welfare checks, and we gave out 224 verbal warnings, or 223 I should say. So compared that to 2018, we're down by calls by 55, gave out 160 less warnings, and then compare that to a month ago from May, we're down 31 calls, and about the same on warnings, so pretty much the same. That's all I have, getting ready for Sinclair Lewis.
All ready to go?
Yep, should be good.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Ambulance Department Quarterly Report, Kathy?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. For the second quarter report, we had for April, a total of 68 runs or activities, of those 68, 10 were no loads, four were advanced life support transfers, and 19 were basic life support transfers. So that's down from last year when we had 81 calls in the same month, but still up from 10 years ago when we had 50 for the same month. And of the total 68 reports for April, the total number of calls that were billed out were 58, for a total of 64,340. Then in May, we had 90 runs and activities, of which 14 were no loads, eight were ALS transfers, and 23 were BLS transfers, and that compares to 71 last year, so we're up from last year again, and 50 from 10 years ago in the same month. And of the total of 90 runs and activities for May of this year, total number billed out was 76, for a total of $95,901. Then in June, we had 67 total runs or activities, of which 18 were no loads, four were ALS transfers, and 14 were BLS transfers, and that compares to 80 from last year, so we're a little down from last year in June as well, and 63 10 years ago for the same month. And of the 67 activities for June of this year, the number of billed out calls was 49, for a total of 60,147. So total billed out for this quarter is $220,388. The receiving facilities and canceled no loads have combined with the first quarter, so just kind of keep a running total for the year on those. And then first quarter special details that we've participated in, in May, we did a farm discussion and first aid for the U of M extension program out at the fairgrounds, so that's something that doesn't generate an activity report for that. And then we did an MCI drill with the fire department and the Sox Center Hospital in June, that's listed under the no loads as a drill, so. Mutual aid, which is when we respond into another ambulance service, into their primary service area when they're tied up or need assistance and covering calls, we went into North's area one time in the second quarter with the receiving hospital to Alomir and Alexandria, and we went into Melrose's area six times, and I believe on that the receiving hospitals, two times to St. Cloud, and four of them came to Melrose Hospital. And we had two mutual aid assists with LifeLink where we provided scene assistance out at the scene, and then they would load the patient and transport right from the scene and go to like St. Cloud or the metro for severe patients. So that's my report, and of course, we do have our busiest time of the year coming up too, with the Stearns County Fair and the parades, and Night to Unite, and all the summer activities. Any questions for me?
Questions, comments?
Looks like you used the Lucas a couple times too.
Yes, still no saves, long-term saves, but it's there, it's a very nice tool to have.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Monthly Report, Ben?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Oak and Fifth Street, there was a sinkhole that we found last week, this week we excavated it, and we grouted the seam of the storm sewer pipe that appeared to be leaking in that area, so that's all put back together and the tar is patched, so hopefully that will fix that issue that was occurring. The flashing crosswalk signs, they experienced a little delay in shipping those, we were hoping to see them this week, looks like it's going to be next week. We did get a permit from MinDOT to put them up, so we're good to go as soon as they get here, so hopefully if they get here next week, we're going to put up next week. We painted all the crosswalks except for the new asphalt that was placed just this past week, we will be doing that next week. Fourth Street has been paved, shouldering needs to take place to finish the project, and that's on our department, so we'll take care of that. Eighth Street, the overlay is completed, 10th Street milling got completed, the splash pad parking lot is paved, the sidewalk is going in tomorrow pending the weather, and then we'll also be finishing up the edges of that parking lot and sidewalk once everything is completed. The crack sealing is completed, and we've also been preparing for Sinclair Lewis days, such as cleaning parade route, senior center and parks. All the shelters have had the walls and floors pressure washed, sidewalks have been edged in the Sinclair Lewis Park and Conservation Park. And last week in the campground, we installed three new parking pads for campers to park on sites 51 to 53, and the electrical and water lines will be installed in the next two weeks, so we actually stripped the grass off and brought millings in that we got from the Fourth Street project and placed them, leveled them, and packed them, and those have been working out very good so far. Out at the airport, couple minor issues, put some new cables on the Central Plains hangar door, they were starting to stretch and fray, had to do a seal repair on one of the bottoms of a rental hangar. Hangar 5 had a new door handle and lock installed since that failed, and just yesterday, the fuel pump card reader quit working, we ordered a new one, we'll get it put in once it gets here. So that's the summary, any questions?
Questions, comments?
Thank you.
6D Planning Commission Report, Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, in your packet on page 17, you have the Planning Commission Agenda from the Tuesday, July 9th meeting. We had one public hearing, it was for a preliminary and final plat for WH Kate's Estates Second Edition, and that is an action item a little later on your agenda. And then also in the packet is the building permit report, and then I did include the first or second quarter of the year, April, May, and June for zoning permits, if you have any questions on those items.
Questions, comments? Move on to our action items. 7A, approve resolution 2019-40 approving preliminary and final plat WH Kate's Estates Second Edition.
So as you know, at the July 9th Planning Commission meeting, the public hearing was held to consider the application of Magnificent Properties LLC for approval of the preliminary and final plat of WH Kate's Second Edition. This is a replat of the city's property at the corner of Main Street North, Lake Shore Drive, and Kate's Estates Drive, so that was that, we used to call it the fragment lot, but it was Lot 1 of that plat. It was recently sold to Broccoli Gel, who is the owner of Magnificent Properties LLC. The plat consists of three lots on which they will build three twin homes, the homes will be divided along the common wall and be sold individually at a future date, so once that wall is set, they'll come in and certify it, and then you'll have like a basic lot split to break it into two. I did include a copy of the preliminary plat and the final plat, they are attached for you to review, and you can kind of see what the layout is going to be on those three properties. And I did receive back from Stearns County, they had some plat comments, and everything is looking good on that, so we'll have the finals, the big Mylars to sign shortly, but we're pending approval of the city council on those. So I don't know if you have any questions regarding the process or rather the plat, I think you're familiar with the area because the city is the owner of it, and you know, we had just recently platted it to begin with because we had bought it as a larger lot and platted it off for the Main Streeter Apartments, they got Lot 3, this is Lot 2, or Lot 1. And I did include in your packet, Resolution 2019-40, which approves the preliminary and final plat of WH Kate's Estates Second Edition to Sox Center.
Questions, comments, anything that's got the findings listed on your resolution?
And also as far as the utilities go, the utilities have all been reviewed both by the city engineer and the Public Utility Commission to make sure how we would put the water and the sewer in, because this was the plat where they had like larger services, rather, and then so he'll, like each building will go to one of those services and it'll split at that point, but they'll both, they'll each have their own unique service line into their lot, so there'll be an easement along the front for them to access that. They won't be cutting into the street.
Okay. Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve the Resolution 2019-40 approving the preliminary and final plat of WH Kate's Second Edition?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second? Second by Diane. Any other comments or questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7C, approve PR 10, Brightbach Construction.
This is pay request number 10 for Brightbach Construction, for the construction on the North End Project. As you know, the contract amount with Brightbach was $3.2 million, the value completed to date is just over $2 million, so we still have a little ways to go, the work, a lot of the work has been completed, but this is a billing request from prior. We do have a total amount earned to date of $2,074,142.07, we retain 5%, so we owe them a total of $1.970 million, of which we've paid $1.781. So doing the math, the amount due this request is $188,844.88, and this has been signed off by the city engineer, and I did include the detail in your packet if you're interested in reviewing those. So the action requested tonight is to approve pay request number 10 to Brightbach Construction for $188,844.88.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve pay request number 10 to Brightbach Construction for
Motion. Second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7D, approve purchase of LED bulb upgrade.
So as you know, over the past years, we've been working on converting all of our streetlights to LED lights, and it's been doing well, but it's been a slow process, and so we did an analysis, I should say Ben and Shannon actually did the work on this, they found a retrofit bulb that's available for the conversion that would make it feasible for us to complete the electric conversion, the LED conversion at this time, however, the cost to do that would exceed the balance that's left in this year's budget. The staff is requesting authorization to complete the conversion with the understanding that a cost overrun that will occur in 2019 is, will be recouped in that first year in 2020 in electrical savings. So I do have a narrative that was prepared by Ben Klink that details it out, and he's here, he can answer any of your questions on that, and then also the spreadsheet. So on the spreadsheet, it's going to show, the top column is what our current streetlights are per year, and then the bottom is what, the second set is going to be what the new streetlight cost would be for the electrical cost. So you will see we'll go from $34,000 for those three types of fixtures, these aren't all, these are the three fixtures that we would be converting out. Total cost per year for electric for those three fixtures right now is $34,522, after the conversion, the cost will be $86,893. You will see that as a $25,000 savings in electric costs, so we will more than save the money that we were investing in the bulbs. So we're going to look at about $11,000 investment to, am I saying this correctly, Ben? $11,000 investment for the bulbs themselves, and we have about $9,000 available to us, so this will be an overrun, but we wanted to bring you up to date on the spreadsheets, you've been asking for this information, Ben was able to pull it together, and so we want to move forward with that, and of course, we can't do it all at once, it takes a long time to put that many bulbs in place, but the Public Utility will be working on that for us.
Comments?
By all means do it.
It's an overrun for this year, but if we can make it back in one year in cost savings, I think it's something we definitely need to do, so. Do I have a motion to approve completion of the LED streetlight conversion as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second? Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approve Resolution 2019-41 approving purchase of payloader.
At previous council meetings, we approved the plans and specs for a proposed purchase of a wheel loader for the Public Works Department, you know, this has been in front of you several years now, and we put the money aside last year into the sinking fund. Bids were solicited, according to Minnesota State Statute, we opened them on Thursday, July 11th at 4:00 PM. We did receive four bids, and I kind of broke them into two and two there because the two top ones are kind of comparable, and the two bottom ones are kind of comparable. The bids were reviewed for conformity with the specifications by the Public Works Department, and then we would have a recommendation at the meeting. The recommendation, and this is that Ben is bringing forward, is to accept the low bid, which is for the Volvo L70H from Nuss Truck for $166,035. Now I'm anticipating you might have some questions about that loader, and if you do, he's here to answer them, I'm certainly not going to try to do that.
Questions? It's been many years since I've run one, so I wouldn't have the questions right now, so. What was the budget we had?
We set aside $160,000, but we also have money in there from a future truck payment, so we have a, we have an equipment replacement budget of which we anticipated $160 of that hole to go toward the loader, so if we spend the $166, then something else will have to give or be delayed. And then also I need to want, there's like about a $1,000 wiring harness that's going to be added to this, it'll be part of that.
Okay. Because basically the payloader, we're using that for, that's, the snow blower goes on there, right? And we've had issues with the other payloader quite a bit as far as that, so I'm just trying to lay out some history for the audience to be able to understand why we're spending this kind of money on the equipment.
We use that, we use that piece of equipment year round, but you're right, in the wintertime we use it for parking lots, and then we also put the snow blower on it to load the trucks to haul the snow out, so, and at the airport and various other areas.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-41 approving the purchase of the wheel loader from Nuss Truck for $166,035?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approve Resolution 2019-42 authorizing sale of excess vehicles.
The following forfeited vehicles were offered for sale through the state's online bidding process, you had them in front of you to actually allow us to offer them for sale at various times throughout the previous year. We had three that went on the sale, a 2003 Yukon Denali, a 2008 Volkswagen Jetta, and a 2010 Cadillac CTS, which were sold for $4,350, $3,600, and $7,575. And so this Resolution 2019-42 authorizes the final sale of those forfeited vehicles.
Questions, comments? I think these are the highest dollar amounts I've seen for forfeited vehicles for a while.
In some cases newer cars than we often see.
Yes, true. So. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-42 authorizing the sale of the forfeited vehicles?
So moved.
Second by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. 7G, approve Sox Center Fire Relief Pension Amendment.
Several years ago, the Fire Relief Association presented a proposal to the city council that we would begin a process to increase the retirement benefit $100 a year over a period of years. The current benefit per year is $2,100, the increased benefit proposed would be $2,200. The assets of the association exceed the benefit liabilities, so there'd be no additional contribution required by the city, if every one of them retired today, it's within that margin. So the increase requires an amendment to the bylaws of the Relief Association and acknowledgement by the city council. So what we're looking for tonight is just kind of approve or acknowledge that benefit increase to $2,200 per year of service. The reason the city council has to be a part of this conversation is if at some time in the future, there's a deficit balance, then the city may have to make a contribution, but the assets of the Relief Association as they currently stand cover their own costs, so we don't have that liability at this time. So we're looking to approve that increase to $2,200 per year of service.
Questions, comments? I think there's only one time that I think, that I can remember that we had, the city had to contribute.
We had to do it two years, but they were, it was like a split, so we had to pay part one year and part the other year.
Right.
And that was in 2008, I believe, that we had to do that, and that's the only time we've had like in our history that we've had to do that.
Right. Do I have a motion to approve the benefit increase to $2,200 per year of service?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries, four in favor, none against, one abstention. 7H, approve Resolution 2019-44 approving specs and authorizing bids for grass rig.
So the Sox Center Fire Department, they utilize, they have a 1990 Chevy one ton that they use for the grass rig to transport grass firefighting equipment and also to pull the trailer with the Polaris Ranger ATV. The department is looking to replace the grass rig with a newer model, and they've developed the specs for the purchase, of which I left on the copy machine upstairs. The department is requesting the council approve specifications for the purchase and authorize them to solicit bids both through the open market and through the state competitive bidding program. The estimated cost of the truck chassis is $55,000, the box and equipment will be purchased at a later date, so this is for the chassis because it takes about five months for delivery. The department is looking to put the vehicle in service prior to the 2020 grass fire season. I think I'll have Ben come up and kind of outline a little bit of what the specs were since I left them upstairs, but I believe that was like that $5,500 or $5,500?
Yeah, it's like the ton and a half, so 550 or 5,500 truck, quad cab, so it's a bigger cab so you can haul enough people, diesel, and the specs lay out exactly what we need for suspension and framework in order to support the weight of the box and stuff, because we want to be able to carry more water than we currently have on a grass rig now, just because we run out quite quickly. So it would have a new water tank, bigger pump, dual hose reels, that's all part of the bed, that's not part of this specification, this is just for the truck itself, but basically it's a 5,500 truck that can handle the weight of the bed unit that we would put on it.
Okay. How old is our existing one?
1990. And the reason that we're asking for the truck now is because, like she said, it takes about five months after you order the truck to receive the truck, and then we have to get it to whoever we get bids from to put the bed and the water pump and everything else on it, so we just want to have time to develop those specifications and get that taken care of while the truck is ordered and being worked on for delivery.
Okay. Council have any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-44 approving plans and specs and authorizing advertisement for bids?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, capital improvement project update, Keith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Got several little things to talk about tonight, one is the start with the north project, our big project. Things are going very, very well, we're right on schedule with that. Oak Street and Elm Street, all the utilities are in now, all the concrete, meaning the curb and gutter and driveways and sidewalks where we have them are all in at this point in time. Take very exception to the very north end of Elm Street, which can't get done until a little bit of utility work gets done there. So that's all complete at this point, all the utilities in the alley have been completed at this point as well. They're currently working on Storm Sewer on Lake Shore Drive, and then we'll move to the Forest Main that comes out of that lift station on Shady Lane and goes up to Elm Street, and then they'll move to the last big piece, which is Country Cult Road, so that's the last big piece to go after that, so it's going along very well. Paving on Elm Street and Oak Street is anticipated about two weeks from now, so we'll be paving there. And at the same time, we should be doing a wear course on last year's on the Fourth Street and that south block of Oak Street, so we'll get those done at the same time. Everything's going quite well, the one thing is the emergency access room change will take place from the 25th to the 1st of August, so I want to make sure you're aware of that. They'll be utilizing essentially the front door for the emergency access during that week while we're doing that driveway through there, so that's been scheduled for a while with the hospital. Any questions on the north project?
Some of the sidewalks that were poured, were there certain areas that needed to be replaced after they poured it?
We'll look at that, I don't know that specifically as we sit here today, but we always go through and do punch lists if there's things that, you know, sometimes kids... and do punch lists if there's things that, you know, sometimes, you know, kids put their hands in it, or they drive their bikes in it, and those kinds of things happen, so those will come with punch list items.
I just had a couple of residents talk to me about that after it was poured, there was an obvious dip in their sidewalk and stuff like that, so.
Well, we'll definitely be taking a look at those things.
But I can talk to you after the meeting about it.
Yeah. I didn't notice any, but I wasn't really looking that hard as I drove by, but we'll go through that real, we'll, just like we do with everything, the pipes below ground and everything, to, to make sure that they're in good shape, so that can be looked at, yeah.
Okay.
Kind of related, but similar, the golf course up there, the ponds, those have all been seeded now, and everything is, it's, it was seeded kind of late, so the seeds kind of light, it hasn't really grown really thick yet, so we'll be watching it and see if it needs any overseeding. Normally, you don't seed this time of year. We'll start back up about the middle of September is when you, you start to seed again, so it might need some reseeding on that golf course, so we'll see how it goes. Certainly, we've been getting enough rain, but, but that, some of that seed just didn't, didn't take off in the heat. Last is Getty Street. First of all, the pond by, by business there, all that regrating is done, took a look at it, and there isn't any, other than just kind of the main channel, there's no more standing water anyplace, so it was, they did a good job on, on finishing and getting that completed, so that's all done, and we'll look at the grass cover. It just was seeded, so hopefully that will start growing up where we can reseed if need be through there. So that's where the pond is at, the retaining wall. I don't have re, on Getty Street itself, by the, by the hotel or motel, I should say, we don't have an exact schedule on this. We're working with the landscapers. It looks to be probably a couple, three weeks out yet before, they're just real busy, so we'll try to get that pushed as soon as we can, but we don't have an exact time schedule on that. And at the same time, we'll be doing the edges of the driveway and pretty much buttoning up that particular project, so. Any questions on any of that?
Questions, comments?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. New business, Operations Committee, Capital Improvement Meeting.
So the Operations Committee will be working on the capital improvement plan, so I'm, I'll be asking all of the department heads to be, you know, as we work on our budget, to present what their capital improvement proposal is for not, not just next year, but kind of like we're looking out five years for that. So just, we just be setting that. Just wanted you to know that that's something that will be thrown over to the committee in the next maybe week or two weeks. You know, we have to have this submitted to the state, or to the county for taxes by September thirtieth, so we like to in July and August, and August is when we really kind of like to hit the budget to try to get that, so we can have our meeting here with the council in September. So it's just something that's upcoming. I'll just be working with them to schedule a time, and what works for the department heads, everybody's been running pretty, pretty busy this month, but in August is usually when we hit that, so. If anybody has any questions about the capital improvements, now's kind of the time for you to get those to me. If you have any ideas that you think maybe we've missed or talked about in the past, just kind of let me know, so we'll make sure the committee reviews those as well, so. No action required on that, this is information for you.
Okay. Anyone have any comments? Okay. Move on to our consent agenda. Schedule of claims, unpaid claims of five hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents, paid claims of four hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-seven cents, for a total of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and four dollars and thirty-three cents. We have paid claims for payroll in June's checks of five hundred and ninety-one thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-four cents. We have resolution number two thousand nineteen dash forty-three, resolution accepting contributions of one hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty cents from the Men's Card Playing Group to be allocated to the Senior Center, six hundred and thirteen dollars and eight cents from Coburns Incorporated to be allocated to the ambulance department, and seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Lions Club of Sock Center to be allocated to the outdoor skating rink. And on behalf of the city and the council, I would like to thank those three groups for their donation. That is the end of the consent agenda. Do I have any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five in favor, none against. Informational items.
Just have a couple informational items. The state demographer has released the updated population estimate for Sock Center, and this is a estimate as of April two thousand eighteen, so we're always lagging behind. So our April two thousand eighteen estimate is four thousand five hundred and fifty-four. We will get one more for April of two thousand nineteen next year, and then we'll go into the actual census. So the, the demographer estimates every year for ten years, and then we have the census, and it resets, and then we estimate again every year for ten years, and then it resets